Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Peter Yarum.
Present.
Mola Rosa.
Here.
Lynn Skoll.
Here.
Jake Keller.
Here.
Charlie Masterburty.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner. Here. James Brislin. Andrew Obanowicz.
Thank you. For the benefit of our guest in the audience, in the event of a fire, there's two means of egress from this chamber. Through the pair of doors to your right, take an immediate left down the stairs and out into the parking lot or to the rear of the building. Out the doors, onto the landing, down the stairs and out onto the town green.
I'll just follow you.
Okay. Whatever one, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Hello, Andrew.
Hello.
Andrew Obanowicz joined us at 7:04.
And again, for the benefit of our guest in the audience, just a quick summary of how we're going to conduct business tonight. The Secretary will read the legal notice. You'll be asked to come before the Board. Chairs in front of us, state your name and address for the record. Have an opportunity to present your application. The Board may or may not ask questions. Most likely, we will vote tonight. If there's anyone else in the audience who comes in, they'll be given an opportunity to speak in favor or against the application. Anyone who does speak, then you will get final opportunity to comment. Additional information that you may have with you that we did not receive may be presented to us while the public hearing is still open. Once I close the public hearing, we can't accept any additional information. Comments made by the public that are not relevant to the exercise of the Commission's statutory or regulatory authority will not be considered by the Commission in reaching its decision. Once your application has been completed, and most likely we vote, it's not necessary that you stay for the remainder of the meeting. You're more than welcome to, but it's not necessary. You will receive, you'll have a verbal indication of where your application stands, but you'll see, receive written application, or written confirmation from the Town. And for the record, a variance can be granted where such grant will not affect the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance. Restrict interpretation of the ordinance will result in hardship. A hardship exists where the zoning ordinance uniquely affects a parcel of land differently from other properties and where use, or, excuse me, and where use of the property or reasonable use of the land would be impossible without the variance. Self-imposed or financial hardships cannot by law be considered as a reason for granting a variance. Madam Secretary, would you please read the legal notice?
The Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 20th, and now again on June 24th at 7:00 PM in the Enfield Room at Town Hall, excuse me, in the Council Chamber. Do I need to read it as is or where we are now?
Well.
We'll go with as is. In the Enfield Room of the Town Hall, lower level 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. ZBA 2013-05-01. Site Enhancement Services applicant, Enfield Lodging LLC owner, 20 Phoenix Avenue, MAP 45, Lot 12. BR Zone requesting a variance for the, for an additional 138.55 square feet for signs on elevations without public street furniture on the south elevation, on the west elevation, and a variance to have two tenants on the same freestanding sign. EZO Section Table 10.30.5. Footnote number 2 and 10.30.2BI and 10.30.5 number 12.
Will the applicant please come forward?
And just for the record, that was for the meeting of May 20th, which was in the Enfield Room. It was continued to tonight.
Yes.
And then it was continued to tonight, which is in the Council Chambers.
And may I also remind the Board that the public hearing is still open. The five that were seated on May 20th are again seated tonight. Those members include myself, Maurice LaRosa, Mary Ann Turner, Andrew Obanowicz, and Lynn Skoll. Evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good evening. My name is Charlie Shalial, and I'm with Site Enhancement Services. I apologize that Mr. Guberek, who was the previous representative from my company, couldn't be here. However, he was in the hospital, and I was asked to take his place. With that being said, I've been fully versed on what happened at the last meeting as well as this application. So if you have any questions, or if there's anything that comes about, I hopefully will be able to answer those for you. Here tonight because we are seeking the ability to ensure the success and visibility of the Longhorn Steakhouse that's proposed at 20 Phoenix. And the reason why we're here is because the code, as it's applied to this property, doesn't allow for the adequate visibility of the building and doesn't allow for the adequate notification to the motorists that are on Hazard as well as those on Phoenix as well. And we're here to hopefully work with the Town to alleviate that hardship. This property, as I'm sure you're aware, and Mike, I'm sure, covered last month, is extremely unique. And the reason why is because unlike the Red Robin, unlike the other retail restaurants that are in that area, some of which also utilize freestanding signs, they have multiple means of ingress egress into their property. However, we only have one, and it's also off of, unfortunately, a secondary roadway. It's not off of Hazard, it's off of Phoenix. Therefore, allowing minimal opportunity for the motorists who are on Hazard to actually be able to utilize that signalized intersection, understand that we're there because we are 136 feet setback from the roadway, and then locate our property. The building, as you know, we originally came in with a request that had a fourth wall sign. Looking at the location, understanding the location now as we do, that the fourth wall sign or the west elevation was dropped from the application because it basically faced the tree. So we apologize for including that originally, but it is, again, out of the application. So the signs that we're asking for are the three facade signs, north, east, and south. The south facing more the hotel and the people who are coming in on the ingress egress off of Phoenix and traveling from south to north on Phoenix. That's who that sign's targeted for. The sign on the side of the building or the east facade would be for the people who are traveling on Hazard, as well as the people who, once they turn off of Hazard and are traveling on Phoenix, will be able to identify the building. And then, again, use that ingress egress point down all the way to the south end of the property, past the Hampton Inn. The main facade of the buil, sorry, the main facade of the building, or the, the main building sign, excuse me, is obviously targeted for people who are on Hazard and who are traveling east and west on Hazard. The freestanding sign, we did what the Board asked for. Put it this way, we went to Hampton Inn and we went to the development company with the intent of what the Board asked us to do. And I have renderings of what Hampton Inn has approved. This is extremely, and I'm sure I don't need to tell the Board, but I'm going to just lay it out there. It's extremely difficult to do because we have two trademark logos. We have the Hampton Inn, who don't necessarily have a vested interest in making sure that the Longhorn identity is not compromised. And at the same time, we have the, the Longhorn trademark, which, of course, having Darden Restaurants work with Hampton Inn, we're less concerned with the Hampton trademark. So we, the lawyers from both sides are involved. We have what both parties have agreed to at this time, and we're obviously going to share it with the Board and receive your feedback. It's just extremely complicated. We've been working on it since day one of walking out of this meeting. Been going back and forth, and I believe it was as of Wednesday of last week where we actually received the feedback that both parties have blessed this, let's go to the Town. So I do have that. Very interested in your comments and your thoughts. But the main, I guess the main issue for us that we have right now is, if you've been by the site in the past week, there's, there's, there's holes in the ground. This thing's going up. The freestanding sign is extremely important to us, obviously, because of the traffic on Hazard. Driving it today and not being from the area, you get off of the highway, and if you don't know where you're going immediately, and I mean, I knew that the Longhorn was part of the Hampton, and I was lucky to see that Hampton sign because, A, that sign is too low to the ground, and it's not large enough to be seen, and it doesn't give you the adequate visibility. So the sign that we've come up with, I think will do that. And it'll encompass both of the trademark logos, and hopefully the Board's happy with it. But the facade signs here are really the crux of the argument, or the crust, the crux of our application at this time. Because of the visibility that we're not sure if we're going to be able to reach through that freestanding sign, the facade signs that we're asking for are imperative. We are asking for additional square footage allowed for the site. Now, for the site overall, as I'm sure you know, between the Hampton and the Longhorn, it's allowed 597 square feet. Hampton Inn currently utilizes 299, so that leaves 298 remaining square feet for that property. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that Longhorn gets to obviously use all of it, but I guess what I'm saying is, through this application, even with the additional square footage that we're asking for for Longhorn, we're not exceeding that property overall square footage. So I just wanted to point that out. The request for the wall signs that we're asking for is 226.4 square feet, so roughly over the 180 that's allowed by 46.4 square feet. And again, this is a unique, a unique property. Only one ingress egress point. If people miss.
I thought I had it.
If people miss our location, they're not coming back. They're going somewhere else. Hopefully, they turn around and they come back and they go through a shopping center, and they may make a U-turn on Hazard, they may pull into the shopping center, turn around, come back. It's a lot to ask of an individual motorist to come back to a restaurant like that. And we find that the less, the more visible that we can make a location, the easier it is for them to reach our location, the more apt they are to stop. Now, is this a financial hardship? No, it's not. I mean, sure, visibility in a marketplace will allow your business to be successful. That being said, code does allow signage. I mean, the property as it lies, Hampton Inn is obviously utilizing signage and they're functional. A restaurant here could be functional, but that's not necessarily meaning that it's going to function safely in the environment. I mean, this is a commercial corridor. I've driven through this area. I understand the different sections, how Enfield's broken up within the Town, and this is definitely the commercial corridor. People are expecting to see commercial signage, and they want commercial signage so that they can locate their, their destination safely. We're a non-reservation-based business, so we rely on that visibility, and we rely on people being able to get there easily. And if they miss that turn onto Phoenix and our one opportunity to cat, capture them, excuse me, once they are on Phoenix, we're done. There's no, there's no way around it. They're going to go to Red Robin, they're going to go to one of the other restaurants that's further down Hazard, they're not going to come back. And that's a definite concern. And this property, when it was originally went through site plan and when it went through the approvals, was always intended for a hotel and a restaurant. Now, would it have been advantageous for it all to come through at one time? Absolutely, because then all the square footage for the freestanding sign wouldn't have been utilized by one tenant. It would have been split, I guess, more evenly. That's not the case we're in. It's too late for that. That's why we're here. I'm hoping that the facade signage that we're going to show you will meet with the Town's approval. I believe we hit the criteria that's necessary for the variance. I have all of those outlined. I mean, it's obvi, it's not going to be adverse to the neighboring properties, primarily because they're commercial. A well-functioning commercial business within this commercial corridor is going to be nothing but a benefit to the other commercial properties. We have no off-premise impact, and we also aren't targeting or we're not impacting residentially zoned properties in any manner. None of the signers that we're asking for is going to be visible to any residentially zoned property. It's just other businesses. Driving through the corridor today, the application is not outside of what other people have. Several businesses within the area have freestanding signs. Now, understanding that we are a BR Zone, they're likely a shopping center zone or what have you, seeing a business with three facade signs and a freestanding sign is not out of the norm for that corridor. In addition, there are several multi-tenant signs within the area. Now, I'm understanding that the way that the, the freestanding signs are configured, because I know that that was a point of discussion last month, we looked at that. I believe we have an answer for that, and I'm going to show the Board that in a second. But there are businesses with shared tenant signs. It would be a disservice to the motor in public if we weren't able to have that visibility on a shared freestanding sign type of scenario, just because of the uniqueness of this property. The trees to the west, which we don't control, there's nothing we can do about it, and it really does create a barrier for anybody who's exiting the highway, or from anybody who's actually on Hazard and traveling towards the location with the location on the right-hand side. It's a barrier that we can't do anything about. Yes, did we know that when we took the site? Absolutely. But to be in the Town of Enfield and to have a commercial site, that's why they have variance processes. I mean, we're not opening up a Pandora's Box type of scenario. This is a very unique situation. With that said, I do have artwork that I'd like to hand out, if I can approach.
Please.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm going to keep this one because it's kind of chewed up.
Yeah, I grabbed my file. Obviously, I grabbed the wrong envelope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Secretary, would you please read this into the record?
Packet for the 20 Phoenix Avenue Longhorn Steakhouse site. There's 11 pages. Signage breakdown. Do you need anything more specific, Mr. Chairman?
Is there a date on this? Dated June 21st.
Where'd you see the date?
It's on the cover.
Oh, dated June 21, 2013. Did we give a copy to our Secretary?
I did. And just really quickly to walk the Board through, because I know that these are some of these images that you've seen before. But again, on the page two, it shows the 136 feet that were actually separated from Hazard. Again, you can see the very substantial forest that's just off to the west of our property that blocks the visibility to the motors that are exiting the highway, as well as the motors who are actually on Hazard traveling from west to east. Again, our ingress egress point, actually, on page three is shown better. All arrows lead to the Hampton Inn ingress egress point. And right now, the Hampton Inn has marked the ingress egress with their directional related signs. So that's, the south wall sign is going to be huge here because if I were a motorist and I were traveling on Phoenix, or even if I was a motorist traveling on Hazard and turned onto Phoenix, I would think that a business such as Longhorn would have its own ingress egress point. It doesn't. It's shared. We have to make sure that people realize that the back of the building, or the south elevation, is the Longhorn Steakhouse. Otherwise, we're not going to see patrons in, in the front end of that property. Again, flipping onto the next page, page four shows you the front elevation. The overall coverage of the signed square footage on the front elevation is only 5.5% of the actual front elevation, so it's extremely small. But again, Longhorn Steakhouse, and then the logo itself, the steerhead logo itself. On the next page, it shows you the east elevation, which would be the one that's facing Phoenix, but would also have visibility to the westbound Hazard motorists. In addition, there is vegetation along the north edge of the property. There's a large pine tree, as well as several landscape trees in front of, or I guess surrounding, the existing freestanding sign. So this sign is important for those motorists to hopefully help allow them to hit that signalized intersection and head south on Phoenix. Sign D is the sign that's on the south elevation of the building. Again, really allowing for people to understand that this is the Longhorn Steakhouse building, for people who are heading north on Phoenix or who have turned off a Hazard onto Phoenix and are utilizing that ingress egress point. Page seven's the shared freestanding sign that Hampton Inn and through, and please understand that this is not the first rendition of the sign. There have been multiple iterations of the sign. This is actually the first one that we have had, been able to obtain both parties' approval on. This is one panel, as you can see, and actually, you know what? I apologize. That page is not in here. I have that page with me in a separate, but it is one panel itself. It's manufactured as one panel, and you'll see that in this picture that I'll hand out in a second. But that is the freestanding sign that we are proposing at this time. 20 feet overall height, so it'll bring it out of that vegetation that I just spoke about, and, and again, be more in line with the others freestanding signs that you see in the corridor, whether it be the one directly across the street, which is the Chipotle, I believe, AT&amp;T and somebody else. I can't, I apologize, I can't remember. Subway and Starbucks actually have their own freestanding sign, which is different than this because they actually have two separate panels. And I understand that in the original communication with the, with the Board that it was come back with one panel, so that's what we did. But I just wanted to bring that up, that I saw that today, that they had two separated panels. But this is very much, I believe, in line with what the Board was looking for. I, I do have that page. Can I approach and hand that out as well?
Please. Okay.
That's where the bank was, right?
Yeah.
The Quizno.
Thank you.
No problem. You're not going anywhere.
It was in a packet.
So as you can see, that is actually manufactured as one, one face. Now, there is separation between the copy because, again, we're working with two very different federally registered trademarks, and we're trying to get on the work on one sign. And the fact that one of the tenants already has their sign there makes it a little more difficult for the second tenant to be able to get it to work, per se. So we're, we're working on it. It's, it's, this is, again, not the first, first crack at it, but this is one that we've actually been able to get both parties to agree to. On page eight of the packet, you'll see this is the, the view for motorists heading west on Hazard. Again, that secondary or the, or the side facade sign is extremely important. The freestanding sign for this locate, or for, I guess, motors traveling in this direction is obviously less important than the west to east on Hazard. The, the wall signage will definitely serve a tremendous purpose here. On the next page, nine of 11, this is taken from the vantage point of motors who just exited the highway and has entered onto Hazard. This is, and actually, if you back up just a little bit, and for safety reasons, we couldn't do this, driving in a car, the tree line actually goes very close to the Hazard roadway. That way, when you're coming off that highway, you pretty much have to see that freestanding sign that you see on the left-hand side of the picture, or you're not staying in that right-hand lane. You're getting over thinking that you've got to get over due to the traffic pattern, and you're flying right past our location. So that freestanding sign is extremely important for that, for that mode of traffic. And again, these are people who are coming off the highway. These are people that are typically unfamiliar with the area because, as we know, 10% of the community is in constant transition, and there's a lot of businesses here. I'm, I'm traveling up and down Phoenix. I mean, there, there's businesses back in there. The Burke's Brothers, I believe, is further back. There's people that aren't familiar with the area, such as myself, coming into this area and to make sure that they're arriving at the location safely, or at least have the opportunity to be safe is key. And then the final picture on page 10 of 10 is the facade sign that would be on the south elevation, which is the Longhorn. And this is for people who are traveling up on Phoenix, traveling north. That would be the rear of the building. And then there's page 11, which I didn't know was there. That does show you that one single face. I, I believe that I've given everything that I can to the Board in regards to the reasons why we need the requested relief. I believe that this is a unique property. We do these, we do all of Darden Restaurants' concepts. We do across the country, from Red Lobster to Seasons 52 to, you know, everybody in between, and the Longhorn Steakhouse as well. And we've been in front of Boards, and, and we do, we go for the minimum amount of relief necessary because Darden Restaurants is not a client that's, that's looking to Vegas their, their locations. It's really just what is needed in order to be able to, to make sure that it's a viable business within the corridor, and that's what we've come to you with. Hence, the reason we dropped the west facade sign. That's why we're really diligently working with Hampton Inn to, to be able to come up with a viable solution. We appreciate your time. We appreciate your patience with us. So if you have any questions.
Jake?
On the sheet that you handed out that had the, the sign here.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions on the, you got the small gray block and then the, the black block. PMS stands for?
Paint and Matching System, which is just the fancy design, or sign, or the paint company terms for what color it's going to be.
And TBD is obviously to be determined.
That's less fancy.
Exactly. Thank you.
When are they going to know what color the color's going to be?
For which one exact, I mean, the Longhorn.
PMS color.
The Longhorn Steakhouse and the Hampton Inn are locked in because those are federally registered.
I know they're looking for the gap color.
The light, the light gray has been deter, I mean, as long as it's a light gray, Hampton Inn said that they're fine with it.
Okay.
We can definitely hammer down what that light gray color is. Absolutely.
I just didn't want to find out it's going to be red or?
Oh, no, no, no. I promise it'll be neither of. I promise it'll be neither of. We can definitely hammer down what color that light gray is and provide that to staff prior to.
Any other questions?
Didn't we talk about, I'm sorry, I thought I pulled my packet. Could someone tell me what the square foot sign sizes were originally?
Oh.
And didn't we talk about that in detail? So A didn't change, B didn't change, C didn't change, D didn't change. We dumped one. But if I was quite positive that during our discussions, maybe you folks remember, and didn't we talk about trying to scooch them down a little bit to stay within our 180 and when Mike left?
That was prior.
I believe that was the understanding.
Yes.
But it was also prior to removing the sign on the west elevation.
Correct.
Once the sign on the west elevation was removed.
Taken off.
Right. Then they didn't need to.
Then they didn't need to.
Aren't we supposed to be at 180 square feet? Are we up at 226 square feet?
Well, we're also taking into consideration the square footage of the site.
Gotcha. Because I was trying to read them in the minutes and I couldn't find the.
Because there's square footage not being used.
Correct.
Correct. So the question still is, what is the amount of square footage versus what was written in here originally at 180?
Are you asking what the square footage for the variance is or what the square footage total?
Total is for what's left for this side.
Right.
What's the amount?
The applicant has that.
The.
Is that 298?
The entire property is allowed 597.
Right.
Hampton Inn has utilized 299.
Ninety-nine.
Which allows for 298.
Ninety-eight left. And you're looking at 226.
226 for the facades and then the freestanding sign would be 14 square. Our portion of the sign, because obviously Hampton Inn already has theirs, would be 14 square feet.
So an additional 14 to the 226.
226, so that's 230. Oh, come on, you're putting me on the spot, 240. Sorry, I don't have my calculator.
You're taking away the west sign. So originally, you were asking for additional 138.55 square feet. The west elevation sign was 68.5, so my math is correct. We're down to 70 square feet of extra signage.
Of variance.
Right.
69 point change.
Yeah, 69 point change.
Right.
Round it up.
Sixty-eight.
Just in case.
Right.
There's a little bit of measurement off. So about 70 square feet of variance is what you're asking for additional signage over and above what would be permitted for the Longhorn Inn. But you're saying that, what you're saying is that you're complying with the overall site signage, so?
Yes, sir.
So the overall site is under what would normally be permitted of this world, one building. Is that what we're saying?
The weight.
The 597 allowed, that's for the entire site.
Correct.
And you're saying?
That the total, all in, said and done, will be under that for both products.
Okay, so really what we're asking for is a variance for the signage specifically allowed for Longhorn, not for the site.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think I followed. Yes, I believe.
That's pretty much, that's where I was asking. Because I'm seeing we're at 240 square feet.
Right.
Give or take a smudge.
And I believe if I read the regulations correctly, I mean, the legal notice says that we're asking for variances for, on elevations without public street frontage on the south and on the west. Technically, you know, now we don't, we're not putting in something on the west. I don't really think you need a variance for probably, on the south elevation because the section that applies here, which is a section 10.30.5, signs allowed in business district, Big B, and little Roman numeral two says, "Attached signs for each occupant in a building are allowed on any portion of wall visible from a public street," not fronting a public street. And if I, now that I'm looking at page 10 of what you just submitted, obviously that sign is visible from a public street, so you don't need that variance either. So we're down to basically just variances for the total sign, 70 square foot variance for the total signage allowed, Longhorn, and then the additional freestanding sign. Correct?
It's not an additional.
Not additional, but it's adding to the size of an existing one.
Adding to an existing and raising.
Right, that's what I meant, adding to the, that's what I meant. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
That's the way I understood it too, when Mike and I kind of dissected it.
Right. I'm sort of trying to catch up with some of this.
You and me both.
So.
Okay.
Now, there was a section, but I don't think this would do you any good, that does allow, footnote eight to our sign regulations, which was added in 03, allows out parcels to have an additional sign in business centers, although they do limit them to a six square, six-foot high, and they have to be 125 feet to another freestanding sign, which I think would make it kind of difficult, A for visibility, to have a six-foot sign, but I think that's partly why we didn't consider that.
I think it's going to put them right in the woods.
Right. And yeah, if you look, you know, we're Hampton Inn put it in, unless they wanted the sign up by the entrance, if they thought that would do them better, more good, but obviously. I think you would be allowed another sign as of right not to exceed actually 64 square feet, at least six-foot high by the entrance. The regulations allow that for out parcels.
And honestly, that rear facade sign, pretty much for us accomplishes the same purpose.
Yeah. And the six-foot height, it was more intended for, I think, actually farther along the mall, I believe, and actually, I know where that came from. The people who put the car wash up over there on Plaza in Skidaco, they had that car wash way at the end. Actually drafted their regulation, came in and got it approved through their attorneys and people to allow an out parcel that was part of a bigger shopping center to, an outback has one. But again, they're very low-key in places where you got two-way traffic that are very visible.
All of the restaurants right in there, that corridor.
Dunkin' Donuts and.
Olive Garden.
Yep, they all allowed, they're all allowed a secondary sign.
The only one that doesn't have a frontal sign, freestanding sign, is Red Lobster.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And if they met that requirement, they could come in and get one, but it would.
Well, and looking at their side, I don't think they have anywhere to put it.
Right.
Because they have parking buried right up to the front.
They'd have a tough time putting one up there.
And that parking lot was full, so I don't want to take away parking space.
Question of staff. Since we've determined of the four original variances requested, and we've basically eliminated two of them, and downsized the 138.35 square feet of signage to 70 square feet, the variance to have two tenants on the same freestanding sign. Now that we have a rendering of what that sign would look like, is a variance still requested, required? Or falling within?
How big is that?
14 square feet.
But there are no longer two different signs on one pole.
Right.
It's one sign.
And what's the total sign, what's the total square footage of that sign now?
The way that Hampton Inn has theirs currently permitted, which I have somewhere, is at 42 square feet. So that's the existing sign. Now, their existing sign size is not changing. And then the panel that we're asking for is 14 square feet. Now, that gray area in between is one foot five by seven, is about nine square feet of uselessness.
So what's, again, my math? Can you add up those three for me, please? Or I can do it if you repeat it.
Yeah, but aren't we, it looks, are you making a new sign here to fit this space?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, no, absolutely, ma'am.
Okay.
Because there's basically no way to reconfigure their existing.
Right, you're not taking what was and making it, you're making new.
No, this is one face.
This is new. Okay.
So.
Fifty-one.
So.
So in total, that sign is 65 square feet.
So basically, you're a lot, and you're permitted 50 square foot total.
So that's 15.
So it doesn't need a variance for that signage to be put up there.
The height would be compliant, but it's 15 square.
The height's fine, it's 20 feet.
Fifty-four, it's right here.
So that one remains to put that second sign up there.
Okay. Yeah, but that.
So how far over are we? Because it's 54.5 square feet.
70 total square feet.
Well, we're at 15, we're at 15 total square feet.
You're, go back to page, I forgot your name, but gentlemen.
Charlie.
Please, Charlie, go, it's all written right on your own breakdown. Hampton Inn is 40.05, yours 14 square feet, total 54.
That didn't have that, the nine square foot of gray, TBD.
So that was 63.
Got it.
So that total sign size is 65 square feet. Minus Hampton Inn already has a permit for 42, so that leaves 23 plus our square footage of 46. I'll have it right, nine. It's 69 square feet. It's a 69 square foot variance.
So we're looking for difference of variance for an additional 19 square feet for a freestanding
sign. You're allowed 50.
Fifteen.
No. Total.
Total, you're allowed 50 square foot.
Right.
Right.
You're not separated.
Right, this is a 65 square foot freestanding sign.
Right.
So that's 15 square feet.
I thought you just said 69.
Well, the variance is for 15.
The variance for the, the variance for the freestanding sign.
I got 63 square feet.
Yeah.
The total sign with the gray insert is 63 square feet.
Point zero five.
Total. Let's make it round figures. He's in the window.
Well, no, because we have to be specific.
Right.
Right.
Are you in agreement? 63 square feet.
Right. We're adding the 54 square feet, the nine square foot of gray matter.
If we can take this drawing that's page 11 and say that this sign right here is 63 square feet, and call that the exhibit and say this is the sign that the board agreed to, if the board agrees to, I should say.
Do you agree with the square footage number?
Of the 63 square feet and based on this sign? Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's called out right here.
Well, that says 54, but that doesn't include the gray.
Right, and you add nine to 63. That's where you get to 63, so.
I'm, we're.
All right, so we're good.
So you're looking for an additional 13 square feet.
13 square feet.
Okay.
So that's what we're after.
So then if that's 13 square feet, and the other request was for 46, nine, 59 square feet.
So we're adding that nine, and so technically you're 79 square feet, not the 70. Before we said, we took off the west side.
Right.
You only had 70. Now we're adding the nine square feet of gray matter.
If we're allowed.
But that's between the both of you, so.
If we're allowed 100.
Never mind.
Okay.
Because that gray matter is non-assignable and it's, okay.
Just aesthetic.
Still 70.
And then the only other is the facade signs at?
What's the total on the building?
226.4 over the 180.
226.
Which is a difference of 46 square feet.
And what I mean by non-assignable, because I see somebody looking at me, a little, is that, the entire site is under, so since that gray matter could easily be assigned to Hampton Inn, it doesn't matter, that's not part of that variance. We're only asking for variance for Longhorn's portion, and there's still only 70 square feet over.
249 square feet.
After all is said and done.
Still in the neighborhood. This is, all we have to do is play around with that. Are you seeing the same numbers I am? He has 298 to play with, total. That's what he's got for his side of the fence. And I'm coming up with 249 with this building signage and the pole.
Ma'am, the only thing that we've been told is that the 180 is applicable for ours, so that's why the square footage thing then becomes, yeah, we're definitely well under for the site.
Local site, but Hampton Inn, Hampton Inn still has approval for other signage. So they don't get permission to use that, it's Hampton Inn.
Yeah, the Hampton has a big frontage, so they're allowed a bunch that hasn't been used. They only wanted, they didn't want to use up their whole.
Okay, my original question was, he gets to play with 180 square feet.
Correct.
Okay.
And I apologize that this is as confusing as it is, as I stumble over.
So we're off by 59 feet.
59.4 square feet, I believe, is the exact number that we're asking for.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm back to you. What do you want to do?
I'm still trying to figure out these numbers.
I'm still, 240, I'm, again, is, are we at 69 square feet for the freestanding?
Total. Total.
Total signage allowed by, we're at 69 square feet, or 70 square feet, let's just round it up, 70 square feet over what Longhorn.
Can have.
Over the 180.
Right.
We're at 59 over.
59 over? Okay.
And I'll make this, I'll make this easy. 59 square feet over, and the reason I say that is it's 226 for the walls, and we're allowed 180 square feet for Longhorn. So if we're 226 for the walls, that's 46 square feet over. And if we're 40 square feet, 46 square feet over for the walls by themselves, and then we're 13 over for the freestanding sign.
14, yeah.
You're not, plus nine.
That includes the nine.
Right, it closes out.
Right, that includes the nine.
Because we're at 63 square feet for the freestanding sign.
Okay.
And if we're at 63, that's 13 plus the 46.
Twice now.
That's 59.
Are you?
59 square feet is what they need.
All right. Are you looking at?
No, I, it's that nine square feet he's messing around with. He's in, he's out, I got it. I'm with you. I'm with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm with you. His paperwork's correct. Just stay there. Okay, so.
If I could throw another loop, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding, I promise it's only 59 square.
How long you want to stay?
No. Remember that 6:00 AM flight?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm a night guy, so I really don't mind if I keep here.
So if we were, if we were to condense this approval process, and if you were to receive a variance to allow an additional 59 square feet of signage, which would include a freestanding sign, that would satisfy all your needs?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Wow, that was a lot easier than I thought it would be. Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay. Any further questions?
I would like to go back to the last month's discussion and just refresh my memory. But Mike said to us that they would shrink those signs on the building so that they could stay within their window of size, so that when they got to the elevation sign, we'd be, and we would be together. And all we'd really have to have is the facade issue.
And you were correct. That's what was stated.
But that's not what's happened.
They were looking for a west elevation as well.
No, at one point, he had taken the west, that was gone, and he had taken all the signage and shrunk them a smudge, so on the building, so that we could put more effort into the tall sign. And that's why he was going away at the end of our long discussion, that it had to do with getting the sign inclusive. That's why he left. And it, and I'm sorry that I don't have my notes, but they're in my office. But Lynn, you seem to.
I remember the same, and if I remember correctly, he was not shrinking the facade signs a large amount. It was just, it was just a couple of inches.
Which were picking him up on the other side.
Right. Because he'd gotten rid of west.
Right.
And he went from 36 on the large Longhorn word to, I think, 34, 32.
Right, and that's why I was looking at our minutes.
And it's not in there.
And they're not in the minutes.
Right.
I do remember.
Yeah, I remember that conversation.
Right, when Mike left, he was coming back to bring the signs into comply, to.
He said he could take those and make them 35 inch?
32.
32.
There you go.
And the reason I know this is, the Longhorn Steakhouse family has two sizes of signs. They've got a 36 and a 32. And the 32s are only used when there's a large freestanding sign present on the property.
Is that? You have.
I would say a large freestanding sign is significantly larger than 14 square feet.
That was going to be my question. Is this, when it is a freestanding Longhorn sign solely, and it is a much larger?
Oh, absolutely. And when we were, Mike and I talked about this in great, in great length, and if we were to have our own freestanding sign or a significantly larger one that Hampton Inn apparently is never going to sign off on, and that's kind of where we are with the fact that we are at a significantly reduced presence on a freestanding sign, lucky to even be able to have one, do not get me wrong, freestanding identification, but a 32 square feet, a 32-inch sign, 136-foot setback is going to look, aesthetically, it's going to look ridiculous.
Right, but just because you have a 32-inch sign or a 36-inch sign, does not mean you can't make something in the middle. I mean, it may be your standard, but.
Well, when you said it brought it down to within the allowed square footage, that's what would bring it down to the allowed square footage, was the 32. That's, that's why I threw out that number.
I don't remember it being that, I don't remember it being that much different.
I don't either. I, you and I are both thinking smooch, which is like an inch.
Right, it was very minor.
Ma'am, I have the same artwork that Mike had last week.
Right, but it was during our discussion, Charlie.
No, no, I mean, I have the artwork that he had last week.
Right, and it's not that artwork. We, we noodled on it during our discussions.
I don't think he took notes on the noodling we talked about.
No, probably not. Or if he did, I'd be impressed. I do have a lot of noodling notes, though.
Okay. Nope.
I mean, is the wall signs, is the wall signs, is it the overall square footage, ma'am, that is the difficulty in the request? Or is it the size of the facade signs?
Truthfully, I was just going back to what Mike was offering.
Okay. And I just, I would be remiss if I may ask.
And if, if I had the minutes that we had that were verbatim, we would be all be able to review them, but we don't, and so, other day. So, I will turn to the chairman.
Okay, further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And seriously, thank you for your time with us. We do appreciate it.
You're welcome. As there is no one in the audience to speak in favor or against this application, this public hearing is hereby closed. Make a motion to approve. Motion made by Mr. LaRosa.
Second.
Second by Ms. Turner. Discussion.
I'm not sure what they're asking for is unreasonable. As I drove Hazard Ave several times, every restaurant of likeness.
Your microphone on?
Every restaurant to likeness of this one on Hazard Avenue and Elm Street, with the exception of Red Robin, has a freestanding sign. They are also in a Plaza, which has a sign for the Plaza. So, I don't, I don't see a problem with this. There is still signage available in the, on the property, be it that Hampton Inn has permission to use it and these guys don't. But there is still, you know, the total signage is still under what's allowed in the property as a whole. The whole intent for this property, right from the beginning, was a hotel and restaurant. I see a viable restaurant, and the, they did a great job coming back with a freestanding sign that we told them only one placard. They made that happen. And, and I don't see an issue with, with approving this. I, I just think it puts them where everybody else is.
I spent quite a bit of time, as I traveled around town this month. Every time I went through there, looking at what made that unique compared to Red Robin and Olive Garden and all the other restaurants on both Hazard, and, and it is the depth of that property. And as I thought about it, that's the unique feature. And I tend to agree with Mo for those reasons. It just puts them on the same playing field. So, I tend to agree.
Mary Ann?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay.
Now, was the motion already made to approve?
Motion was made to approve. It was seconded.
Okay, i- i- if somebody might consider amending it, then make sure you include it in accordance with, and cite the specific.
Well, what, what, well.
Record that was, that we.
What will happen is.
So, it's clear what you're approving?
There's revisions on our signage page. There's revisions to the texts, which we will write in there.
Okay. Just, right.
Okay.
Just, so it's understood that it's going to be in accordance with, with these plans dated June 21st, 2013.
We'll write it in.
Come in for permits, we got a, very clear, there's no confusion.
I've got one, I forget what we call it.
Conditions?
Conditions, thank you. That the.
PMS color.
PMS color is gray.
The spectrum of gray, because I understand the PMS, be careful.
Right, I'm not saying what gray, just gray.
It'll be a light gray match to that, absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a discussion. All those in favor of approving this application, please signify by raising your hand. Motion's approved 5-0.
Board, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Tell Mike we want him to get better.
You and me both.
Sorry, you don't know what's wrong with them, that's too scary.
It's, uh.
It's not.
Good.
Safe flight home.
Let's get some literature in here. Okay, Mr. LaRosa, let's start with the revisions. Revisions to the text is going to read to approve the request for variance to allow an additional 59 square feet.
You guys still do that, I'm sure you guys got a couple.
59 square feet of signage. Closed.
So, you, you want to revise the, what the text would be on there?
Mm-hmm.
Well, do you want, do you want me to give you a suggestion here, or no?
Go ahead.
Requesting a variance for an additional 59 square feet. Cross out the next sentence, or the, the, the text between the commas there? Yeah. So, you're asking for a variance for additional 59 square feet, and a variance to have two tenants on the same freestanding sign with a total sign area of 63 point, or plus or minus feet.
I like that. Allow two tenants, one panel on the same freestanding sign.
On, right, on, correct, on one panel.
Two tenant, one panel.
Good catch, one panel of a freestanding sign with a total, with a total sign area of 63 plus or minus feet.
Right.
I guess she has a .05 or, or they cut the plastic the wrong way. A little bit, uh. Because that, that's basically what he said, he's only, he was down to 59. 59 square feet, and actually, we should clarify that it's for Longhorn, not 59 square feet for the total, total parcels, since that's, that's fine. 59 square foot.
Well, it would only go for Longhorn anyway, they're the only ones on the variance.
Correct.
Variance to allow. Okay, we have a variance to allow an additional 59 square feet of signage. And we have a variance to allow.
Two tenants, one panel on a single freestanding sign.
Two tenants.
With a total sign area of 63 plus or minus square feet. And then, if you really want to belt and suspend, you said all.
On one panel of a freestanding sign.
Total square footage.
A total square footage.
Of 63, plus or minus.
Of 63, plus or minus.
And all in accordance with the plan submitted dated July, June 21st, 2013.
Okay, so, revision to the text. Shall read, to approve the request for a variance to allow an additional 59 square feet of signage, a variance to allow two tenants on one panel of a freestanding sign with a total square footage of 63, plus or minus, all in accordance of the plans dated June 21st, 2013.
Has it down really nicely?
Yep. And the reason.
Unique shape of the property.
Yeah, unique. Unique setback from the roadway.
Unique setback for this particular tenant. With a shared common driveway entrance, with a shared common entrance.
Off of Main roadway.
And the reason for the approval is, has a unique setback for this particular tenant with a shared common entrance off the main driveway, off the main roadway entrance of the site. For the site off of Main roadway. Okay.
Could we, could you just, because I'm going to have to go in there and sign this. The 59 square feet and the 60 something square feet, are we talking about two separate variance requirements that we're, we're filing? Okay.
Okay, moving along. New business. None? Package?
I'd like to send a card from all of us to Jenny. Don't listen to it.
Very good.
I'll take care of it when I get home.
Good idea. In your package, you have the minutes of the May 20th, 2013 regular meeting, a motion to approve made by Mary Ann. No.
Well, we need to have discussions, so we need the motion to approve, so so moved.
By.
I'll make the mo, okay.
Moved by Mo, seconded by Mary Ann, discussion.
I don't believe our minutes are complete. We had a lot of discussion, and a lot of it's not in here with the, the discussion we were having back and forth between us and Longhorn.
Yes, I agree.
Minutes need to be verbatim.
All right, well, that was the first, was that your first meeting here? So, yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
So, different, and I know different towns. I mean, I've read, I've read other towns' minutes, and sometimes you get a three-hour minute meeting in six pages, which they're, they're just summary minutes. But it's what you're comfortable with. If you want some more discussion, we can go back and take a look.
Well, just as far as when we start talking numbers back and forth, and.
Yeah, that, that.
It would have been helpful tonight.
Transcripts are difficult, because then you run into the problem of getting it back in time. F O I says you got to get them in with a certain amount of time. As you know, we've had some issues. And part of it's because, you know, P Z C minutes turn to be 37 pages long, and, and they be, almost become court transcripts, you know.
Jose, give us a second. So, go ahead. So, we're talking about the minutes, how would we like them?
It would be helpful to have them as close to verbatim as possible, because those minutes could have helped us tonight.
Okay.
We were all scattering.
We hear you.
What was said last month.
So, how do we want to deal with the minutes this evening?
Well, what we, I think what we ought to do is, we'll put this on hold until next month.
I want, I just would like us to consider, we didn't set the standard going in. I would like her to have the option that from this point on, and that we approve these minutes with the understanding that they would be more in the future, and let these stand as.
As long as everyone's comfortable.
I don't have a problem with the minutes. It would have helped us tonight, but we've made a decision on that, so these minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no sense in tabling these, right.
Right.
Are you all right with that? What, are we doing tabling these? No.
No, no, no.
And approve these minutes, but with the understanding going forward, you want a little bit more closer verbatim.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one other amendment on page one and page five. My last name is spelled with a C, not a K. It's only spelled with a K on Halloween.
So, would you please make a note of that?
On page five?
Yes, please.
Make that correction.
Oh, yeah, how about that? It's more, it's writing text.
With corrections made.
Wait a minute, where's the second one, Lynn?
Page.
It's on page five. In the bold, under approval of minutes.
Approval of minutes. Oh, yeah, there you are.
So, as, as we now have that on the record, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. 5-0. Other business. I have one item. And Jose, this is, not to catch you off guard or anything, but there's been communication between staff and our board on the fire station approval, where variances were granted on that application and appear to be overridden on the planning and zoning approval. And we would like clarification, and if you're not prepared to discuss it tonight, then, you know, we can postpone it. But we would like to know how one board can grant the variances and another board can override that variance.
Okay, I can only report what, what, what transpired at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I think after, when the variant, when the applicants came in for variances, they, they, after they received their variances, there is a section in the regulations, they realized that they probably didn't need to get the variances on the buffers, because there is a provision in the regulations that allows the commission to modify or waive buffers. If they feel that's, that the neighbors are sufficiently protected, they do so in, in areas where, where, you know, there may be woods or something else, where there's, uh. Another good example, I think, was up in, where the new auto parts store on Enfield Street is going, that didn't provide a full buffer, but it's, it was better than what was there before. And, and I think the applicant submitted some birmingham and a combination of berms and, and plants that, that basically gave the protection to the adjacent neighbors. So, there is a section in the regulations. I'm just, again, I'm not arguing for or against that, whether, I'm not trying to substitute their judgment on, on, on whether they felt that. But what happened was that when, when they came to the public hearing, I believe the applicant's attorney raised that, said, we, you know, you, you have the authority to waive these, and we request a waiver. I believe the neighbor that was to the north appeared at the, at the hearing and said he, he didn't like the buffer anyway. He preferred the parking, because during winter storms, he'd be able to get off-street parking. And the, and the commission granted the, the, the waiver of the buffer. So, basically making those variances, those portions of the variances move. And I, and I, and that's what the commission did. I mean, basically said, we're within, I don't think they even considered it as a counter, like they were overriding what the, what the P Z, what the Z E V A had done. I think they said, basically, the argument was made before them that the regulations allowed, that section of regulations specifically said, it's up to you to, to modify, these are not, if you, if you so wish. So, let's say they had come in and, and requested just the other variances. They stand alone, those variances, in theory, should stand alone, whether, what was the other one, front setbacks?
Well, those were conditioned. That's, that's the issue we're having, is that they, they were conditioned on the parking.
Of granting those variances. And it's been recorded.
And we recorded them.
Yeah, yeah.
And we offered them to come back before they recorded them, came to your office. Now, we have an incident, because technically, they're not compliant, and they could get to an issue when this building project starts.
Well, I'm only reporting what was transpired. That was, the, the argument was brought forward, that those argument, that the, that the variances for the buffer area were, were, were moved. And, and the commission had the authority under its regulations to modify.
They have authority, Jose. We are not going to disagree with you, that they came to us in error first. But they did, and we worked within their requirements, and they got these very specific variances. And if you look at the latest plans, they're not even in compliance. It's not just the four parking spaces. Question on the table, my opinion is, they have now filed variances with the town that are in conflict with their building. are in conflict with their building. And the concern is, they're out of compliance, and technically, they're in violation.
Well-
We would like to know how we're supposed to get those fixed. We're saying come back in, and we'll do something.
Obviously, if you wish to ask the town attorney, you know, I would ask the board to, to, for, you know, that you make a motion to go for an opinion. Obviously, I, I can't, I would imagine that it's no different than if someone gets a variance today for, for, for a house, and then, you know, you approve a certain plan, and later on, 10 years from now, they want to put something in addition that conforms to the regulations. Yet it's different than what you approved, and, and they may even get rid of the addition they had a variance before, or needed a variance, and put something else. You got a variance on the books that no longer applies. But, again, I, you know, you could get a variance for something, and then come in and apply for something that conforms, whether you do it, in this case, it was all done concurrently and within a month or two of, of you granting the variance. But certainly, if you'd like to ask the town attorney, you know, you can certainly, I would ask that you take a vote to, you know, to, to refer this to the town attorney, and, we can get together, and you can specify the question that, that needs to go. Because I think you need to make it very clear, succinct, you know, and get the, as to whether or not just the question was moved. I did have an informal conversation, you know, not asking for a formal opinion, and the initial reaction with the town attorney's office was, yeah, I think this, this makes that variance move, but maybe they don't under, they didn't understand that, or the point was not made clear that, that you, you and your deliberation of that variance, that was an important part of, of the, of the condition. So there may, that may make a difference.
Okay.
Whether, whether, you know, it was just four separate variances, or whether that variance was tied. Because if, basically, they didn't need, it's like, you know, somewhat like we did with some, we determined that they didn't need to couple of variances.
All right.
But in that case, they determined after the fact that they didn't need those variances. They could have just gone to the commission and asked for a modification.
Is there a motion on the floor that we meet with the town attorney for clarification?
So moved.
Second or second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor.
When can we set it?
Motion passes.
Okay.
Jose, can you set that up?
Yes, I will. And, and, you know, if, yeah, if you want to try to, you know, if you, if you want to send me an email with what you think the question ought to be, and I can certainly-
I can do that.
Then I call you, if I think that, that's okay, and I'll just send that along as is, or-
Okay. I'll send that out tomorrow.
Yeah. Then I'll be able-
I have the day off.
If I see something else, that's, that looks like something, we'll call you and discuss it.
Okay. I appear to be missing the cover page for this.
Somebody? Cover page for what?
For this variance.
Uh, gave it to you. Somebody must have it. The one I handed to you at the beginning of the-
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, you have the signature page. I just-
No, I think I gave you the whole thing. I think I gave you two pages.
Never mind, I found it.
All right.
All right. Let's say Andrew found it.
All I do need is the legal notice back.
Yes, the legal notice. I handed it to you, so you could write your stuff, so you have to get that.
I have the legal notice.
Right. Here are the minutes. We'll give them all that. Or you can give it to me, and I'll give them that way.
Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.